Good evening. Thank you for joining tonight's Budget Work Session for Tuesday, April 23rd. We're now called to order. As many of our residents and stakeholders know, this is the time of year where we kick off our budget planning for the next fiscal year. And so to that end, want to start with tonight's meet. Well, we've actually had some presentations already at town council work sessions as well as council meetings, and so we'll continue with what we're calling tonight Budget Work Session Number One. To kick us off, so Town Administrator Bailey Hedgepath, I'll turn it over to you to get us started.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we're proud to present the draft budget for fiscal year 2025. Staff has worked hard to put together some estimates for you, and Mr. Tonelli is going to go through first our revenues and then some of the expenditures by departments to provide an overview of where we are. At the end of the presentation, we can do, you can ask questions throughout because you know, this is how we, this is an interactive session. At the end of the presentation today, we will provide council with, because we're going, in FY '25, we're going to have to do a transfer from fund balance. We will provide in the next session some opportunities for the council to look at some revenues that could be, that could be enhanced, I guess, so that we would not have to make such a large transfer from fund balance for the long-term stability of the town. So, but in this session, we kind of wanted to state out the basic needs of the town, kind of cover that, and I believe that that's what this initial budget does, which is give the council what the basic needs of the town are, and then looking at where we can go from there. There are some options, of course, things that we would love to see, but I think this is a budget that reflects a practical, in some ways frugal, no frills, town. And I'll just say that we are, but we are maintaining our services at the current level and also providing a COA to the employees of the town who are working hard and are watching prices escalate on everything from food to gasoline to anything else. So it does take those things into effect, so it's not as frugal as we probably could be. So from there, I'm going to let Mr. Tonelli start to share his screen, which will then show you the first page of the budget, which is up in a second. I'm just going to wait for that, and then I'll let Mr. Tonelli start talking. Mr. Tonelli?
Yeah, thank you. Am I up on screen? There I am. Okay, good. Michelle said staff worked hard. It's really knock-down, drag-out fight trying to, you know, so that's a nice way of saying it.
I was going to say, who won the arm wrestling match?
So, you know, it's been a constant work in progress, and it will be. You know, this is our first stab at it officially, which I'd like to say, just get something on paper for the mayor and council to discuss. We presented this at the last meeting and went to walk through it in a little bit more detail, and this is really for the public as well. So a lot of this, you all have heard already, but I'm talking through this for the public as well. So I'm going to start and go down it, and I'm going to watch my time, send about five minutes on each slide or less. Total revenues, if you look over here, are, we have columns here for FY '23.
Can you put out some, Vito?
What's that? Yeah, thank you. That'd be great.
I feel like we're on white.
Yeah, I know.
That's the thing, you don't have a laser pointer.
Wow. That's, that's why I have an Excel up instead of, so I can highlight it. Michelle, I got to pull it up same time you do, I think.
Michelle, I think that might be enough.
I apologize.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the math. That's the math. That's why I forgot. He likes to show the reticulated part. Sorry.
Gee, boys, I work beyond design standards.
It's working on a COVID-19.
Yes, I am part of the workers' comp.
So we have three columns here. Previous year budget, FY '23, current year budget, FY '24, and proposed next year budget, FY '25. This column over here on the right, percent of total, is a percent of each one of these categories of the total budget, and a far right column is increase next year over the current year. So let's run down real quick, we're a couple minutes behind schedule. Real estate taxes have increased because of the assessments. That's the first line right there, the 4.4 million. Town assessments went up 6.2%. That's rounded. So 40% of our budget is coming from the real estate taxes that we generate at 74 cents per $100 per assessed value. Next one is business personal property taxes. They make up another 10% of our total budget, and that is for the property tax on the assess, business personal property assessments. Business personal property assessments are levied locally and by the counties, and the state provides the assessment, and the counties and towns can bill at the rate that they agree upon. Income tax is another 6% of our budget, $650,000, increased slightly based on revenue estimates from the state of Maryland. Again, those are just estimates, so as earnings and wages have increased to kind of compensate for the inflation, that's more taxable income provided. So the, and other local taxes are our admissions and amusement tax. That makes up the balance. So you see for taxes, for the first few is 56% of our total budget. Now, we get down into licenses and permits, and this is a summary page, but also have this blown up as well, the detail of the revenues. So you can see here, the licenses and permits, $215,000. The largest part there is the cable franchise fees, which is agreed-upon amounts negotiated through Verizon and, I'm sorry, who's the one over here? Comcast, for the subscribership. And that's negotiated by the county and the towns all at once for, I think it's like a three-year agreement, four-year agreement.
Mr. Tonelli, on that particular line item, though, it seems, I know we've talked in previous years about the fact that people are shifting away from hard-line cable to more of the Wi-Fi type services. Is it safe to think we could really get more on those fees?
I think that's built in, I think it's built in as a increase as far as the, as far as the pre-negotiated amount. I think that's why we're estimating it to be slightly more, but I know what you mean, Mayor. But the other part of the Comcast and Verizon, even though we don't get a portion of the high-speed internet, but do we now?
Yes, we do.
That's what it is. We get a portion of the people's high-speed internet, which is why people are keeping those two services, that's what we're getting. It used to not be a taxable portion, but I think that's part of the agreement, is the reason why it's kind of staying more stable than losing out on it completely.
The subscribership is kind of like the flat line that we've always been getting, and that's what really this represents. I mean, a few years ago, this was $160,000 because people were paying for the full cable packages, you know, paying $300 a month for full cable packages. So we're getting all that. Now they're just paying for the internet, for streaming services, as you said, because that's why it's kind of like just leveled out here at the $110,000, $120,000.
That's really helpful. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. And that's for licensing, for using all, you know, it's a negotiated agreement. The, I'm sorry. We have $250,000 carried over from ARPA. This is what we're projecting will be left over June 30th. That is going to go into next fiscal year. Now, it could be 253,000 or 247,000. It's going to be around $250,000, you know, so right now, that's where it is. We'll firm that up as we get closer. We have the federal earmark in there of $150,000, and that is going to go towards capital projects. So that's money coming in, expensed out as capital projects. Highway user revenues, we got a nice bump there, $327,000. Police aid has increased for the last three years, is now up to $300,000. It's actually like 298, 299,000. I just kept it in here as $300,000. It's like 299 change, I believe. And that doesn't include any new police grants, too, that are currently in the works. So as we get more confirmation, this could go up, I mean, because you got grants in there, chief, for what, just a couple of them. What was that? Overtime?
Yeah. So he's saying it's the overtime in the safe streets, chief.
He's trying to feed me, so I have to say it.
No, you want me to come on?
No, it's okay. So this could increase as a grant funding comes in, and that will offset, you know, current or future or other expenses. The state bond bill for Boswick, that's, you know, placeholder $500,000 coming in, and it's being expensed out as capital funds. Some of the smaller items here, these items are fixed. The county funding, that is, the first is a fixed rebate that we receive for using the county dumps, and the bank stock rebate, a throwback from 1968 or something, a hold of harmless agreement that we receive every year. The local fines and fees, we're going to bring up, we're going to do more of enforcement or collections of outstanding, tickets, thank you, yeah. So that's going to increase. Now, red light enforcement, we are bringing that up, and that's going to be another, I guess you'd say, traffic calming measure, traffic enforcement measure. So when these come up, this is going to be another generator of fines for infractions that come back to the town through a, and then the automated traffic enforcement, we have that leveled off there, 1.5 million. And that number, we do have a history of now, which, you know, is not so much of an unknown now, so, which is nice. This one, we don't have the history of. This may be, chief will think, it may be conservative unless, you know, we get a history, I'd rather just keep it there right now.
To that point, chief, do you recall where you came from when they launched those, well, if they had the cameras about what they brought in in that first year, or first couple of years?
Yes, ma'am. Good afternoon, mayor, council, community, and colleagues. So yes, when we first brought those cameras online, the first couple of years, they had five cameras, and they were generating like 3.7 million. And when I left, they were like around about 2.5, somewhere around.
And was it a, well, that was a bigger municipality, so they probably had more of the red light cameras than what we're starting out with, would you say?
Yes.
Okay.
So, well, no, they didn't have red light cameras.
Oh.
So no, I thought we were still talking about speed cameras.
Oh, sorry, no.
So I stand corrected.
Yeah, yeah.
They had no red light cameras.
Oh, interesting.
When I was there, they only had speed cameras.
Got it.
So I stand corrected on that.
Okay, got it. I was thinking it was an additional, like through the, the other enforcement.
Yeah, no.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Insurance reimbursement, this is for, we receive a rebate from our workers' comp carrier now. They started this two years ago. I mean, we are paying a hefty sum to Workers' Compensation Assurance, it's a nice one, about 5% of the, 5% to 8% of the premiums come back as a rebate. And it also includes any insurance reimbursements for any claims that we have had with auto or property. Property rental, this is for the Mango Cafe. Let me go down some other major ones. Interest earned, we bumped that. I mean, it's going to be close to $400,000 this year, interest earned. I dropped this down to 250. I could keep it at 400, the way the rates are going, because the rates are not going down, but you know, I'd rather be conservative. Now, there's no, as the ARPA funds decrease, are being replaced by the speed camera funds and then the red light camera funds. So as one goes down, the other goes up, so we still have the same, almost the same amount of cash balances. Actually, we're projecting more of a cash balance, so not 250, I think it'd easily be 350, but not knowing what the rate market's going to be next year, I'd rather just keep that in as 250.
And Mr. Tonelli, before you move to the next session, section, under vehicle deployment line item 4840, for any residents who are watching and may not be familiar with that, could you just explain what that is?
Sure. That is a, for our take-home police vehicles, we make a fuel deduction to offset their taking home the police vehicle. But, you know, taking home a police vehicle, everybody likes to see it because you always see police cars on the road, so. Mislands revenues are just anything, you know, small that come in that I really can't find a home for. Sometimes you get the, I mean, it's small, but I'll go on to our street lighting project. This is what's going to be possibly moved over in the next fiscal year, $100,000 from community legacy, and that's offset by capital expenditures. And then we have some small donations down here for our shop with a cop and also for the Public Safety Community Action Team. Again, that's going in and then going back out again. So 10,000 coming in as donations, and then that's earmarked for that use, so $10,000 going out again. And here's the, the main point, the, I'm going to go back to the summary screen. This is a transfer from fund balance of $679,000. It's an increase over this year's budget. We have in this year's budget $494,000, transfer from fund balance, and in order to meet our obligations that we're projecting, we would need to pull $679,000 from the fund balance in order to balance the budget. And it's close to what we had in here originally in FY '23 before our final budget amendment. I think it was 667,000 that we had originally in FY '23, and we didn't use any of it, and we actually ended up with a 400-some thousand dollar surplus put back into fund balance. So a fund balance is kind of like, you know, you put it in, you can pull it out, but it's always been, it's always been increasing because of the surpluses that we've had over the years. And actually, I'd like to show that real quick. Do I have time to show that, Michelle?
Yes, please show that.
Okay. So this is a cool little thing, because I did it. But, um, let's see. You like that, chief, don't you? So this is a tracking of our fund balance. I'm going to blow this up more so you see it. I just want the residents at home to see it before I blow it up. From, for the last 14 years, 15 years, so you can see the, the fund balance is, you know, what's, you know, the, basically, in real-world terms, our equity, okay? The unrestricted fund balance is what's available as spendable equity. It's cash. It's rarely available. So you can see from FY '10, let's just go down here to graph, it's a lot easier to see. So you can see from here, the graph, you know, from FY '10, our fund balance has gone from 3.8 million up to over $7 million. And our spendable fund balance is at $4,364,000. And really, what the difference is, is we have, we've used this fund balance to put back into assets. We purchased vehicles, we purchased computers, we purchased, you know, furniture. I mean, we reinvested it back into the town, which is why you see the fund balance increasing, but you know, we still have about the same spendable fund balance there. But you can see that, you know, we went from 3.8 million up to over $7 million in the last, you know, 14 years. And this is when I started, and I could put that there so you can see where it went up, but that's just, you know, bragging rights, but anyway.
It's a reflection of your good work.
Just kidding.
That was a very subtle hint, Mr. Tonelli.
I'm sorry.
Right, a subtle brag.
I tossed that in there, I'm sorry, y'all. But, um, I gotta have some fun, come on.
Mr. Tonelli, just when you're talking about the fund balance, I just wanted to kind of, for the standpoint of the public, when you're looking at that, that the other part of the increases were partly due to ARPA.
Correct.
For the influx of ARPA. So in the last two years, the largest influx came from your, your ARPA funds, and even though, but as the, as, and the reason why the unrestricted amounts are restricted is because as we move into FY '23, '24, those amounts have been replaced by speed cameras, which are restricted in the funding. I wanted to kind of make that clear so that we, so for the, for the residents, I know it's clear for the council, but for the residents to understand the shift from ARPA now to speed camera, and those have to be spent by a certain amount of time. So there, so those will be in the, that account less amount of time than the ARPA funds because of the restrictions on speed camera, too. So that's, I just wanted to kind of put that out there because that is a, that's an important distinction, so that it doesn't, so people don't think we have $7 million, and that reason why it's not all cash, because it might sound like we don't have all cash, but it is cash, but it's not, it's restricted cash.
Mm-hmm. Okay, I want to go over to, and that's just graphical of, you know, of FY '23 to FY '25. You can see how the revenues have been increasing mostly across the board, except for the, I'm sorry, one drop, the Fed funding drop because of, because we don't have the ARPA funds. And you also see a little bump there for the transfer from fund balance, and just a nice little graph there of the percentage. So let's go to the expenses. Let me jump back here to the summary side, just so I can stay on. The mayor and council, town administrator budget, the clerk and the finance budget are, there's a summary of each here and also briefly touch on them, but there are smaller departments. There are the general and administrative departments. Even though council is elected, you know, it's like oversight of everything, so that's why I include it in administration, and it's 14% of our total budget. Then you can see as we get into, since we are a service-oriented organization, these are what's funding all the services. The other 86% of our budget is providing services to the town, and you have public safety here, public works, earmarked for ARPA, the grants I said that were coming, coming in and going back out, and the Fed and state funds coming in for capital projects and going back out again. Now, that is a service to the town, because we're providing a service with those capital projects to improve the town. So you can see the percentages there, and I can touch on each as well, Michelle.
I was going to just make one comment about the ARPA, so that, so that we can be clear. The ARPA has not been designated yet, and it has not been put into our salaries or anything like that, so the council will need to then re-allocate where they want to use ARPA, whether or not there's a portion that you want to put into general fund items, or if you want to use it for specific projects, but we just have now put it as a $250,000 funding area. But it could be used for anything based on the uses of ARPA, but it's just now, it's just one category for the council to make that decision. So I wanted to make that clear.
Yeah, and it is a good point, because I was noticing what you had there in parentheses, other than full-time compensation. And I do think we, as a council, really need to weigh that, because that money was a one-time opportunity given to the town, and we've invested a lot in helping the residents through rental assistance, through food assistance, and other programs, utilities. We've provided resources to the business community. We used a good chunk for salaries to add on staff, so we've taken care of people, but as far as long-term investment, we need to do something that's going to last and not just be spent this year, and then we don't see that investment in five or 10 years. And so I know we've got the public works, well, Prince George's County Public Works project going, which is the flood barrier project, but my thought is, for those funds, I would not recommend using them in the general fund. I think we need to determine, what can we do with that that's going to make a difference? Is it something that's going to help with flooding in Ward 1, so that we don't have issues to complement the flood barrier project? Is it investing in beautification, so we're uplifting the community and things actually look different, you know, long-term? So that is my two cents, but I want to hear from everyone, if you have ideas or just want to take more time and maybe at the next meeting, come back with some thoughts. That was just my reaction. Councilmember Bryan, I see the wheels turning.
I mean, I, right now, and I just, we'll think about it a little bit. I mean, we have done a lot, we have, we continue to help our residents in, in seeing something that's, well, I guess maybe, maybe the question is, Mr. Vito, I mean, where else can we, where else can we put the money? Where does the grant allow us to redirect or move funds to the types of projects with the remaining?
For...
Are we restricted?
No, for grants under $10 million, they're, they can be put in something called revenue loss. They changed that when the funds first got allocated. Revenue loss means it is, it can be used as general funds. You can use them for, I think, pretty much anything except for funding pensions, retirement, but they made it really liberal for the small organizations, because at first, people said, you know, well, you know, we can't earmark all this at once in capital projects, you know, we're a small town, so they said, you know, you know, people said, we really need this in our budgets. So it's really up to mayor and council. It could go for capital, it could go for salaries, it could go for office supplies, really. So it's anything and everything, almost.
And I think the critical thing is, we know lighting is a problem, and so is it something, we don't have enough to complete the full 57th Avenue lighting project, what it was forecasted to be years ago, when that project first started, those costs have gone up astronomically. So is it invested in something like that, where, again, this is a longer-term impact, it's improving the town versus putting it into salaries or merit increases? That's stuff that the town should be doing.
Exactly.
I don't think that's a good use of ARPA funding. ARPA is this one-time infusion, and I want us in our community also to feel good about, okay, a couple of years from now, they still see that, they can't see that in salaries, you know, they can't see that in minor investments. So I appreciate you saying you'll give it some thought and just come back with some recommendations, but councilmember McBride, any?
And then, but wait, I'm, 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 and then also, because although there's the lighting on 57th, but we can't forget about the other side of Blattensburg, over there, off of 52nd and Newton Street, and over there, and, and, and so, yeah, we just can't forget about another area over there as well.
Well, mayor and council, just the information. I think it's a matter of, just because that's a project that's already underway, thinking about that, and so if it can help, then it helps us to phase in, because I think you make a really good point, councilmember. We really do need to talk about the bigger strategy for that as we look across the town and really map out those areas, because I think once we know all those pockets, then it helps us to identify, can we go after CDVG funding or something else to help us? And have the accurate numbers, so when we get the grants, it's for the full amount, we're not having to supplement to try to figure out how to Band-Aid the funding together. So I think that's a really good point.
Yeah. And one more, one more other thing for Mr. Vito. In terms of, so now, the ARPA funding, so when does it have to be exhausted? One more other thing for Mr. Vito, in terms of, so now the ARPA funding, so when does it have to be exhausted, does it have to be used up?
December, yeah.
Oh, 2024.
Unless, unless we get into a contract to do some work, and then that can go on for additional two years.
Two years until 26. But if not, it's when?
December.
This year, 2024, okay, just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
And just so you know.
Wait, any more questions?
First I have anything to say, then I'm like.
I'm joking, I'm joking. Sorry, Mr. Tenelli, I'm sorry.
That's fine, I was gonna say, almost half of all the ARPA funds have been put out to community assistance, so it's, you know, it's done a lot of good.
And I think town administrator, you were gonna make a comment.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention the fact that the issue that with our lighting estimates, just to kind of give you some real world context, is that we received $150,000 from DCHD for the lighting on 57th Avenue, and when we received the bids, they are exceeding about $750,000 to $800,000 for this, for that lighting, for that lighting project. So we're fun, we're currently trying to apply for additional funds from other grant sources for that, but you're right, mayor, about trying to get the fund, to get funding for, I mean, to come up with plans long-term for our lighting needs and to do a lighting study so that we can address all the areas in the town, but I think it's going to be more than probably grant funding our way through this. And I think the one issue that I just wanted to mention regarding ARPA funding, and I know that we would love to do more projects and we support whatever the council puts forward, but the issue also is, is that as we look at the fund balance transfer for six, the $600,000, you could also reduce your fund balance transfer by that $250,000 as well, so you can look at it either way. So that I just wanted to let you guys, to let the council be aware that that fund, that fund balance could be absorbed, portion of that fund balance could be absorbed through ARPA, and, you know, without having to make any changes to revenue, to the town's revenues or adding any, you know, adding any fees or going after those fees, so that's, that's the only reason why staff wanted to kind of get some targeted things that would make impacts, as well as looking at the fact that you are making that transfer from fund balance. So I just wanted to kind of balance it both for you because it would reduce that amount and allow us to then immediately spend those funds, be compliant with the grant, and then go forward from there, if that makes sense, and then you can make your transfers from fund balance for some things, so it's sort of a, you know, a free-flowing movement.
Yeah, and that's helpful because we don't have forever with that grant funding, we'll lose it, we've already had an extension, so if we don't get that project going, then that's a significant loss for the community, particularly if you look at the crime stats, the lighting on there is important, not that it's not in other parts of town, but we have stats to show where lots of incidents occur and where that could be super helpful. So I think that information is super helpful, but councilmember McBride, or councilmember Dixon, did you have any comments?
No, not really, but I do, I would like to see the lighting improve, because we took, I know me and some other councilmembers, we went up and down 57th and 58th Avenue, and the lighting is very poor. I know even over in Ward 1, the lighting could be a lot more effective, and we're concerned about our youth right now and when it starts to get dark, yeah.
We will add what we, we're gonna add what the, so with DCHD, I have to spend the money, and they're saying I need to spend it by June, so I will be coming up with a, a plan to spend what we have and get it out there and get that, so we do have some bids, but we have to rework those bids because of the costs, so my goal is to get that done, or get, at least get the project started this fiscal, before the end of the fiscal year so they can go in, so you will see something within, by the end of the summer, and I'll, you know, and get it, get that extension so that we can get it all spent.
Yeah, I mean, even if they could just give it, like, re, reframe it into two to three phases.
I'm working on it now.
Yeah, so that way at least phase one is done, we spend down that grant money and can assess, okay, where's the rest of it going to come from?
You'll see like five lights instead of 40.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, five versus 40, it's a little sad, but, you know, we have to start small. Yes, right, very bright, councilmember Dixon, any comments or questions before we move on? All right, back to you, Mr. Tenelli.
I don't know where, you want me to take you to the administrative budgets, or you want to go into public safety and, you know, so.
I think we'll have to save public safety for the next session, but if we can get through some of the administrative ones, that would be good.
Sure, okay.
Because I know we have ideas on the mayor and council, community events budget, there's been lots of chatter about ways that we can impact the community with that line item, so we're, there's lots of smiles up here right now, we're anxious to talk about that budget, especially to my left.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Okay, so this is the mayor and council budget, again, last year's budget, current year budget, next year proposed budget. The only increases up here are compensation, the, it's kind of like the Me Too clause that we have in there, I call for the, oh, thank you. There, okay, is that better? Okay. I probably got picked up on Michelle's microphone.
No, I had mine off.
Oh, nice, okay, so mayor and council budget, there's a slight increase, and that is for the coal increases, and it's kind of, and the way we have it is like a Me Too clause, so if employees get the increase, the mayor and councils.
You shouldn't use Me Too clause.
I'm sorry, that is a, yeah, that, that's from union negotiations, I forgot, okay, so. Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, that was a throwback, so it matches the, the staff or the colas that are going to be included in the budget. Proposed, thank you. This is why you need to talk more about this. And health insurance is increasing based on enrollments and choice of plans, and that is the same through every department. We try to budget during the year, you know, like a mix of single coverage versus family coverage versus spousal coverage, and those all have different price points or cost points, I should say, so that's why you see the health insurance going up by $5,000, which is minimal compared to the other departments because it is just the five of you up there, so. So you see the, it's a 6% increase over the current year. So let's go down into the other ones, the council business development, that is for your professional development, that is to, to get you to the conferences for MML, National League of Cities, PG CMA, I can't see what's over here on this side. What is that, the African-American Mayor Association? But this increase because, you know, we're hoping to provide more opportunities to the council. Now, if you think you want to go to some, you know, if you see some more less, no, we can go ahead and see the costs and increase the budget here.
There is one I wanted to consider for next year, I was invited to speak at the National Forum for Black Public Administrators and was very impressed with that group, I wasn't able to stay for the sessions unfortunately, but am considering that for next year, and I can send over those numbers, what is it, Michelle, three-day or four-day conference?
It's three days, yeah, three to four days, yeah, it's three to four days, and I don't remember where it is, but it's, I think it's on the other side of the country now because it was just here on the East Coast, so it usually switches.
Okay, all right.
So I can send that to everybody and in case other councilmembers are interested in taking a look and budgeting for that for next year.
I mean, this is really.
I think they have an organizational membership, so if we, because I'm, since I'm a member, I think we can have a certain number of people on organizational membership.
Okay.
And I know that's what they're trying to push for organizations, so I can look that up and send that to you, if you do a membership that way, because then everybody would be members and have full membership.
Okay, yeah.
And you also get certain things for, for doing that, so you get certain trainings.
And, I mean, I can just type from experience, I mean, MML is great on the local level and the state, but you really need to see what's going on, you know, with colleagues across the country and everything, so.
Yeah, I mean, I was impressed, they had the head of Noble, I was sharing with chief there, and, I mean, those are opportunities we don't normally get to interact with, and remind me, Chief Noble, the acronym stands for?
National Organization of Black Law Enforcement Executives.
Yeah, so just those conversations you don't get at MML and some of the other events, not even at NLC, so it's a completely different network of professionals, and just having the ability to pull off their brain power and expertise and bounce ideas off of them was very valuable, and I believe the keynote speaker was Attorney Benjamin Crump, which was.
For that day, yeah, they had, they had several, several different keynotes, including they had, they had a, they had a couple of TV journalists and people like that, and they always have, they just, it has a various, it has various, various luminaries that have come, I mean, they've had former secretaries of state that have also come with Conalisa Rice and Colin Powell, were both, were both there, and they're both honorary members, so it's a, it's a good group.
Employee recognition is the next one, and Michelle, you gonna touch on that one, just because.
Sure, so this is, we've kind of expanded some of our employee recognition events outside of chief's event, which is actually in his budget, but this is in regards to staff rec-recognitions, I will say it's all of our, it's all of our events, but it's chief, it is chief's event.
It's a town event.
It is chief's event, but this, now, this is, this includes our, we've, we have a, an employee recognition committee that Ray has been heading up with all the different departments, and actually, there's events that are happening all year, so I promised to put a little bit more into this so that we could support employees and have some opportunities for, for them to interact more, so.
And right now, we have, geez, I want to say 56 employees now, it was 54, it's between 54 and 56 right now, so that's why you see that, you know, increasing because, you know.
But I think, I'm sorry, considering all that we're able to do, that line item definitely is important, and I appreciate you adding a little bit more there from the Christmas or holiday event, I guess I should say, that we had back in December, just having that opportunity to sit and catch up with staff, it's so important, and I know we did the other trip earlier in the year in DC, the luncheon with the staff down there, and that was beautiful, I mean, these are important opportunities that they need to have to socialize with us. Oftentimes, they see us coming and going for meetings, and we really don't get tremendous opportunities to connect with the staff and just let them know how much we appreciate them, so definitely agree with this particular line item. I know back in 2018, Chief Collington, then Captain Collington, was getting ready to start, oh, there's a plug right here. Yeah, there you go, but we did the employee recognition awards, and so, like you said, by getting the committee together, it's my hope that we can go back to that because I do think it's important to have that civilian of the year recognition, and I know, chief, again, you throw the biggest staff recognition of the year with the May event, but just during other times, I mean, once a year, it's just not enough for the fact that they're the face of the community, many of them interact with the residents in more cases than we do just because of the nature of their positions, so would definitely want to make sure we have some awards outside of what is presented at chief's event and continue with the other recognition, so not saying it has to be the same September event last year, but we really enjoyed ourselves on the boat, so.
Ray is working on bigger and different things.
Bigger and different.
Different, he's working on, and so you've got something, we have something planned in May, which is the main event, but he's, they are working on different events. I think there may be a boat cruise, but that might be different, so we're trying to make them different, so we want to give people variety.
We might get out to Mr. Tenelli and Officer Reinhardt's way closer to the bay.
All right, I try, I try to keep the background noise down, so I turn my mic off, so it's, okay, so discretionary funding is for the mayor, is $500 allocated to each member of the mayor and council for, to direct to local organizations or projects. And that needs to be an agenda item in the next couple of months that we need to talk about, anyway. Fire department donation, we have this here at $30,000. Scholarships, we kept that in the budget, same as this year, 5,000, and community grants, again, kept that in there for $12,000. Total $47,000 going out to the community organizations. And here's the community events, so I guess we need to work on a community event budget, so it sounds like, you know, I mean, that's really our way of giving back to the citizens and getting people out and about, and, you know, just to really see the town, enjoy the town, everything, and actually add the attraction to come in here to the town, so, you have any questions or?
Yeah, questions and comments, so in thinking through the community events, we know the police department has a similar line item, and that is important as we try to build relationships between our public safety officers and the community, but in addition to that, as listed here, I know, and I just want to start making a list because there's some new ideas for things and make sure we're just on the same page based on the number of events that we're looking to do for the community and making sure that number looks correct, so I know you've got fireworks, we have.
It's a short list.
This is not inclusive of all of them, so I can, so we can give you the, yeah, so we can let you know, so yeah, you list and we'll, and we'll confirm.
Okay, so to that end.
I could have gone all the way across.
Okay, so to that end, I know councilmember Dixon and I have been collaborating on a way to engage our youth. We feel like if we can give them an opportunity to have activities, it will reduce the amount of time that they are left to themselves and just not doing the right thing, as well as teaching some life skills, so councilmember Dixon, you want to talk a little bit about what we're trying to get a proposal together on and why?
Thank you, Mayor James, good evening, council. Good evening, everyone, good evening, residents. So, yes, so Mayor James and myself have been working in getting the youth off the street because we want to make sure that our youth are getting the stuff they need for the future. We're actually working on getting the Boys and Girls Club reinstated, we're not only looking at sports, but we're also looking at educational stuff and academic, rather, academic and work development, et cetera, so we're in the process of, we're still trying, we have a few meetings coming up, so we would love to get this on the budget, thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Dixon, so we have been meeting with some of the community stakeholders and have engaged with Boys and Girls, Boys and Girls Club directly, and so the goal would be to have maybe one sports program starting this summer with something else that's on the fun side of things, and then once school starts back, adding in some sort of academic enrichment, so after school, they can go to the community center, and there's some support being provided to them there. Again, if we can start this at the elementary school age and get these kids on the right track, these are children that we don't have to worry about causing problems that our public safety officers have to engage with them on, so we're trying to very much be proactive in giving them some good productive opportunities in their communities, and as we know, sports is a vehicle that, while most people think it's just athletics, it is not, it is a vehicle that helps you build teamwork, collaboration. It is a vehicle that helps you build teamwork, collaboration, sacrifice, hard work. And so we want to develop and instill some skills in these young people that can translate to other opportunities that will help them advance in life. So we'll try to get hard numbers, but I think right now, I had to throw a rough number out. I would say, what, like 25,000, maybe 30,000 is what we'd be looking at. But again, we'll try to get more specifics from the next meeting. And, you know, Chief, if you want to look at it as crime prevention and slide some dollars our way, we will take them.
I like that idea.
Yeah, I'm a huge advocate for youth sports. I mean, I think that's one of the last places that you can really teach discipline. So it's, you know.
And unlike sitting kids down and lecturing them, getting along, having respect for other cultures and other religions, they get those lessons in sports in such a unique way that it really does help them just be better people overall. So, yeah, I agree 100%.
So would you like to try, would you like that to be a separate line item under youth program or sports, youth programming, or Boys and Girls Club call out? Would that be easier than for it to be under community events? Because I didn't know if you wanted to keep community events as one-time events?
Versus an ongoing program.
Programming so that you could then do that? Is that something that we could just put back into the next budget with a, with a plug number of like 25 or 30K? That way that you then can see it, if that works?
That makes sense, yeah. Would that, would Councilmember Dixon?
Yeah, I put youth services or youth programming.
Youth programming.
Boys and Girls Club. And like that way, we kind of, for now, we just say partner with, you know, partner with, in our notes, partner Boys and Girls Club to hold. And I put some like notes in that for you to, I put down some notes which we'll, we'll translate. But it'll just, I put like sports program, enrichment, educational enrichment. And possibly, I was thinking, is that more like the uniforms for the team and things like that? Team uniforms and field rentals?
Yes, and to that end, we were thinking to start low cost, so with something like soccer or basketball, unlike football, which has more equipment costs.
Okay.
And, sorry. Oh, go ahead, Councilmember. Yeah, starting small and just trying to build something slowly, but that's sustainable.
Okay, so one to two sports programs per year, uniform, field costs for sports, and then some type of after-school programming, funding for things like that. Okay, I put, that's what I have in my notes. I just wanted to make sure I was correct.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Brown, you had a question?
I have a question. Because as it's great that we do a lot of community events and we overlap with the cat team. So where is the, I know there is some collaboration there, but it's like, where is the overlap? I mean, why aren't we kind of, I mean, why is it that the cat team, they're doing something and then we're doing stuff and it's just not like a big family together doing stuff?
Chief, would you like me to, or would you like to take the lead on this one? I'll let, I'll let the chief take the lead on his cat team and then I'll take a lead on the council, I mean, on the town, if you, that would help.
So I envision that there will be some interaction because staff is going to have to be involved in as well as volunteers. So I envision we will be working together on it.
And if I can add, I'm sorry, and then I'll come back to you, Town Administrator. I know we didn't get to it this year, but at the top of 2023, I did sit with Ms. Montford and Mr. Jeffries to talk about that and to just at least try to make that effort not to overlap anymore. And so I think rather than doing it on the calendar year, maybe, starting on the fiscal year, or so in June, having a sit-down with a couple of us and those two individuals since they lead on them, and just saying over the next year, what are you guys working on? And what are the events that the council is working on? And just having that conversation. Because I know in October, it tends to get busy, Chief, because you have the trunk-or-treat event and then Mr. Jeffries will have the town hall event here for Halloween. And those sometimes can clash a little bit with each other. And I just, I think it's improved from what it was before, but I admit, we still need to continue working at it. And I don't know whether it's a quarterly sit-down so that we say, okay, what's coming up next quarter? And we collaborate on that. Because even last weekend, I wanted to be a part of the bike rodeo, but then we had the Earth Day event at the waterfront park and both events start at the same time. And both are important. So it just, it makes it hard for us even to support. And I don't want you to feel like, oh, we don't care about what the police are doing, we're not showing up. That's not it at all. It's just sometimes we have to pick and choose because things happen at the same time. But Town Administrator, oh, sorry, Chief, go ahead, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, you still got it in. We circle back and we still made it out there.
That's right. I do appreciate it, yes. So Chief had grace and mercy on me. When I finished the Earth Day cleanup at the waterfront park and we came back here, Chief and Lieutenant Friscorn and I did do a bike rodeo. So we went out toward Riverdale Park on the trail. So we got in almost six miles. It was a light ride. I think you guys did more than the earlier part. I was tired from being out there with Town Administrator and Mr. Jeffries on the trail. More so walking, not so much picking up trash, because thank God, the trail was very clean and there was not a lot of litter. So, anyway, I digress. Town Administrator?
Sorry, Councilwoman.
I'm second to Chief. I'm still working on my bicycle, okay?
Is that what happened?
I was telling, I was telling Councilmember Dixon, I said, well, I said, I have a helmet. She had a bike and no helmet, and I had a helmet and no bike.
I was wondering, so that's what it was?
Yeah, I don't have a bike. You know, maybe they'll open up the bike rental down at the Blatonsburg waterfront park, you know, again, so.
That's all cool thing in our parks, they have like a bike repair station that they put up and it's like, you know.
Don't, don't mention that.
Oh, sorry, okay.
It's a sore spot, Mr. Tenelli. It's a very, very sore spot. No, tell me more about this bike station.
Yeah, we're working on it. We're working on it.
So that, that is a great station. So I know another jurisdiction that had one and it was right out front of the town hall. So the residents could come and they had the tools hanging down, they would, and they can work on bikes, put air forth and so on.
Councilmember McBride would just stay on her stationary. But yeah, to that point, though, it was mentioned by our former congressman for this area that he wanted to see a station, you know, down there along the trail. We did find there already is one existing. Of course, there could be more added to it, but it's on Park and Planning site. It's next to their office down there. And it's convenient because if you have to come off the trail, tighten up some things, the tools are all stationary. But to your point, Chief, if the police department could fund a station here at town hall, I think that would be pretty amazing because we could make this the meeting point for people to get out. We'll meet here and then get over to the trails and ride. Awesome. I mean, I know your team has the fancy electric bikes, but for the rest of us who have, who do not have that option, it would be appreciated.
You should have to move to the battery level. Because you gotta make it out, you gotta make your back.
Okay, in interest of time, I'm just gonna finish up with the mayor and council budget right now. So community events, we're gonna do some work on. Senior citizens projects, this is a $1,500 town donation given to our three senior housing facilities to use for programming. Town meetings, this is the, to cover the cost of video production for our meetings and work sessions and also for refreshments and also for ad hoc town meetings that come up, you know, and have like Port Towns meetings or when we host that and when we host dignitaries and things such as that.
On that point, and this, Mr. Tenelli and Chief also, because I know when you help volunteer, you do a lot with AV, is there anything that we need to prepare for to either improve our cameras or equipment? Even with the situation with virtual meetings and bringing the presenters in so it's smoother, is there some technology that maybe would make that whole process better?
Do you want me to, because I was gonna say that we do have funding, we've been funding some of those capital improvements in this year's budget so then to make those things, as far as the, I know that we've been talking to Rick about making, about adding a speaker in here. We've already changed out several of the cameras and we are doing some improvement. So what my hope is, is that in the end, before the end of this fiscal year, we'll include those in the budget. But we do have some funding and some of our replacement costs for this room. So I think there are some, but we, I mean, I think we may change these microphones, things like that to get us better, to get, to, because you guys, because the new ones, you know, so the new ones are there so that everybody has the same type. But I think we are making some changes before the end of the year, but we can always add some funding in this line item as well for that. But there is some, we do cover it under general equipment costs.
The last two years, we've improved the cameras and we've had an additional camera in here. And we also just replaced the TV with a much larger one and modern one so we can actually share screens and everything, so. And it's a much better presentation here, so we are working towards that, so.
And Chief, with your expertise, is there anything you would recommend that maybe we need to consider as we're making upgrades? Because, you know, we have our equipment and then you show up and there's like super-duper advanced technology that you bring, so.
We need a green screen back there.
I would definitely recommend getting some acoustic boards around in here as well as some upgraded speakers. Maybe they can be mounted up in the ceiling instead of the one we have there. And that way, the sound can be dispersed, yeah, the sound can be dispersed evenly throughout the room. And so that would, those two things, I would, and I probably would put some, a couple of cordless mics around.
Got it. And then with our podium, are we still good with our podium? Or do we, is it time to upgrade? Because it's been old faithful.
It's going to the museum.
It is, okay. It's what, older than me?
We're getting a new podium.
I think that goes with the dice up there. Those two should be.
Did you hear my neighbor? Seat, new seating for council?
That is on the list.
That's already on the list in this fiscal. It's literally taken that as fiscal.
Yeah, the mayor, we're gonna go and, you know, outfits and chairs so that, because I know that you all have your selection and sure, that would be great, but we just want, we just. We just want to take a, we just want to take a, take a look at some.
And what, I mean, you're definitely willing to go, but what would be helpful is I know at my job, we're going through a move. And so they had samples brought in so each staff member could test out. And it was only four, it wasn't a big sample size, but just test it out. And based on your height and everything, pick the one that is possible. Do we have an office vendor that we use? Like, do we have a Staples account where they could just send us samples?
We have a Staples account. We haven't used it in a year. What I recommend maybe is just go to the office supply store and try them out. They have like 20 or 30 of them. They have like 20 or 30 on the floor. You know, so it's, and just let us know the, I mean, the apartment number. You know, because these chairs don't last long, you know, I mean, they're meant for.
Well, they have. These have been here since my husband was here. It's been a while.
Some of those gas cylinders are probably shot and, you know, you can probably feel the springs coming through when you're sitting on cardboard, but yeah, they're still there. Okay, so, yeah, we'll talk to you offline about that, definitely.
Sounds good.
The insurance, you can see, is a small amount there and that is for the, that's a separate insurance rider for the, it's called a public official, a public official bond. It protects the town as well as the mayor and council. And the last one is membership, which, which we increased slightly. Now, there is, unless you know more, that, you know, you come back to us. I mean, just as you said, for the black public administrators, yeah. So that would increase because of that, so. And we'll find that out for you. I mean, that's something the staff can do. You don't have to send that over. So that's the mayor and council budget. And in interest of time, do you want to keep going? Or you do hold off on the smaller departments or?
Okay, so we have two comments and questions. Councilmember McBride?
Okay, this one is for Chief. I know we're, well, the Castle Lake Council is supposed to, our next meeting is next month. Now, we're supposed to get with you some kind of way.
That's not all. Okay, thank you. We're supposed to get with you some type of way so we can do the, is it, I don't know if you call it neighborhood watch? Where we do the walking through the neighborhoods again? They want to bring that back.
Okay, absolutely. That's, that's coming up. We just had that discussion with staff that we get ready to do the call, call to action.
Okay.
And then we'll start up our neighborhood watch. But I'd be glad to come and walk with your group. We could put it out and then we just meet and start walking.
Maybe you can.
So Councilmember McBride, actually, Chief and I restarted Neighborhood Watch. And so what normally happens is I'll send an email out to the group, try to get availability from the group and then we'll put a schedule out for when we're gonna walk. So I'll make sure I include you on that email. That way, when the dates are identified, if you don't mind sharing them with the Lake Council. And then to Chief's point, if you, if they're doing a walk and want to invite Chief, that's a, you know, a great opportunity too. Because many of them, they come for service and don't necessarily get in the community and understand the dynamics of it. And so it would be great to have that interaction with some of the members.
Okay, good. Thank you.
And like you said, Chief, we were just talking about that, what, on Saturday? The weather's breaking. It's time to get back out there.
That's right.
And then I also wanted to step back as we wrap up this budget because I know Councilmember Dixon has some ideas as well for community events for the next fiscal year. So I wanted to give you the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. So the mayor has been in communication in regards to a few stuff that I would like to bring to the town. And also, I think the mayor spoke with Michelle, the town admin. And also, Chief, I think you are also aware of it. We know that October is Domestic Awareness Month. And I'm looking at bringing health and healing empowerment to the community. And also, November is Diabetes Month. And I also want to bring that to the town for the seniors. If we could get that on the budget, would that be okay?
Yeah, so we can definitely put that in. And I know Town Administrator said she would also come back to us with the other items that are covered in there. That way, we have a chance to see everything. Because to your point, Councilmember Brown, we need to make sure we know what we're looking to do over the next year and then also make sure we're not conflicting with the police department on their events. But yes, definitely, you know, diabetes affects a huge portion of our community. And so Councilmember Dixon has some very strong relationships with the medical profession because of her career and is able to bring in some of those experts who can not just educate the community or lecture them, but really have engaging conversations and a workshop where they can actually learn and make some better choices with their lifestyles once they leave. And then I did share with her when we were talking a few years back, we did the Domestic Violence Forum, actually in this room. We did it on back-to-back nights. The first was in English, the second in Spanish, and we did it via broadcast. And the amount of people who tuned into that was far beyond anything we could have anticipated. And I partnered with a few folks, including Councilmember Harding from Comar Manor. So we were thinking if we make that kind of a collective thing where we're working together with our Port Towns partner, whether we have it here or over there, it's free because it's right here in-house. And we can Facebook Live it or broadcast it via YouTube so we can reach more people. But as I was sharing with Councilmember Dixon, you do get in-person audience, but the reality is for some people in those domestic violence situations, they're ashamed. They're not gonna come out to a forum. But if we can broadcast it, they can go back and watch that on YouTube or Facebook when it's safe for them to do so. You can't do that when you're right in the house with your abuser. So just, you know, partnering with our Port Towns partner, Chief partnering with you on that. on that will be important, so we'll make sure we follow up once we get through all the budget planning. But any comments or questions about it?
Well, as we know, a lot of people just think about domestic violence as someone beating you up, but there's more to it than that. So that's why we want to really educate the residents, and not only the seniors, but the youngsters too, that are actually going through it a lot and not talking. So that would be good if I could get feedback as well from my.
I'm just gonna say, Mayor, that I, and I didn't answer, I have a chance to answer it when we were asking about the list, but Ray put together a list at the beginning of the year of some potential, of the, of the, for the whole year of what we were, what we were proposing. And I just wanted to make sure, so I'll, I'll provide that to the council at the next meeting again, so that you have that. But I also think that the one thing that we did do was we did remove the conflicts that happened at, at Halloween, so that we are not doing multiple events. And also, Ray has kind of stuck to one event per month, or one or two events per month versus doing multiple, so that I think he's done, I think he's really done a good job at moderating that. We just happen to have an issue with the county with growing Greenrich Pride and Earth Day, that they didn't combine the two, so we have now two events instead of one. So I just wanted to make that, and we've canceled, we ended up canceling International Day because of that particular conflict. So just wanted to, that the only issue that we'd like to make sure that we share is that when we have events in the town, that we want to not potentially overlap with the chief when we're doing these, because we're trying to just do one a month. So we are, we're keeping it really tight with that. So in October, what we want to do is, so, but I know, there's some things that only can happen certain months, so we can do those events. But I just wanted to mention, if there is a desire to do, let's say, any kinds of food giveaways or anything like that in the holidays, I need to get, hear that from you guys in this budget cycle, because I don't know that for sure. And I want to make sure that we also, that you also think of that issue, because if there is a need for in November and December, or at least just in November, one or the other, that's something that we need to know.
Yeah, thank you for mentioning that, because that is a huge positive thing that our community is able to receive when we support the food giveaway, particularly at Thanksgiving. And I know we've received positive feedback from our partner that the town support significantly made that possible. And then thanks to ARPA funding, we were also able to do the Christmas giveaway as well, which was a huge help to people around the holidays. And so, want to just open it up to the council, you know where my heart is. I'd like to support both of those again, partnering with VGC, but open to, you know, feedback from the full team. I think all, yeah, all of us were out there. I'll start, Councilmember Dixon, and we'll go down the line. But again, just thinking back to the Thanksgiving food giveaway with VGC and partnering with them and funding that again, I think we did fifteen, what was it, fifteen K?
It was, it was twenty K.
Twenty K.
It was twenty K, so, but I think the one thing that we can do is we'll be a little bit more creative with our funding. And look at maybe opportunities for sponsorship if we come out early enough to see if we can get a portion of the turkeys, because what we did is, those, those baskets cost us approximately fifty dollars per household. So, you know, that's, that's a large expense for the town, and so maybe there's a way that we can underwrite a portion of it and maybe use, because we were able, they're able to source the side dishes one way and things like that. So I think maybe if we start early, working with our partners, saying, hey, this is how much we have, what can we do? I know that VGC, VGC happened to be really good with that, and we gave the NOW Foundation funding also to help with the volunteer coordination, so they got a certain, so it was total of fifty thousand dollars that we ended up spending. But, you know, we've had these partnerships, we supported them when we had the money, and trying to figure out how you're going to use that. So I think it's a little bit more flexible, but there are hard costs. I know that a lot of the places did not have the money for the meat, which was like, you know, a turkey or a chicken. But the sides, if we could, you know, we can get some of those donated perhaps from Walmart or working with our park community partners. But I don't want to hit up the same people that Chief might hit up for his community partnerships. So I just, but I, but I just want us to think creatively about that.
Yeah, and I would agree. By starting earlier, we definitely, I would think, would be able to get some sizable donations to help offset it. I mean, even if we put in fifteen K, let's say for Thanksgiving, with the commitment that we try to get, work with VGC to get the additional donations sponsored. Because I remember even before the town was giving them money, when I was meeting with the business owners, I put the flyer out to them, and folks were calling me, and I was filling up my truck with turkeys from Bates, from the Exxon gas station owner. So we have people who will donate, we just have to reach out to them. And I think now that we've restarted the business group, that's an opportunity as well, because at the end of the year, they're looking for opportunities to give back. So I think it's a huge opportunity by just getting out ahead of it and also coordinating with the police department, so we don't overlap in asking the same group of people for too many things. Because I know, Chief, that's close to Shop With A Cop time, so we don't wanna, yeah, we don't want to mess that up. But we have Americana grocery store, and I don't think we've ever tapped Mr. Rodriguez for donations, so this could be the year to see if he can donate all the canned goods. And then maybe all we're having to fund is the cost of the meats.
And I believe that Mr. Reinhardt did, just, and I kind of sighed, so I'd heard him, that, you know, contacting some of the local food banks and kind of partnering with them in regards to this would probably be a great idea. I just, I think that we'll just get a little bit more creative this year, and if staff, if, you know, if we have that time and we know what the council's desire is, you know, to say, we want to serve two hundred and fifty or three hundred families in Bladensburg, that's something that we can then come back with you, once we've kind of, you know, by not cannibalizing another program, but to be able to help, to give you some realistic. But if it's for those two dates, that's what we just need to understand.
Yeah, and I will say, I think you mentioned it was about fifty dollars per household.
It ended up paying fifty dollars.
For that amount of food, that is remarkable, because when I went to Giant on Sunday, I didn't get as many bags as they got, and my bill was a hundred and thirteen dollars, and that's with getting store brands. So, I mean, considering how much was in those, and we all saw those bags, you had the turkeys and then the bags also stuffed with all the side fixings. I mean, VGC, kudos to them for really being frugal and, you know, getting the best prices for the canned corn and everything else. But even still, I don't think that's bad. So even, you know, if the cost, again, can be offset, I think you're right, we, we can do our part to help make up the difference. But I want to open it up to the council members, because like Michelle said, it was twenty K we did last year. So what seems like an appropriate number, knowing we're gonna be aiming to offset some of the expense, or I'm sorry, it was twenty-five total, because we also gave the administrative funding to NOW Foundation to help offset all the volunteer coordination. But Councilmember Brown, what would you think would be a good starting point?
But definitely, definitely, my mic is on, yeah. Definitely think that we should continue with the Thanksgiving and the Christmas/holiday giveaway baskets, but, and also with the police department, because, because you, you all do, I think we're looking at, I don't know if they're two different scales, so like with the, with the church up there at the school, that one is a, was it a bigger one? Chief, is it, is it, or is the one that we do up at the Bladensburg, with the VGC at the Bladensburg High School?
Yeah, because that's four hundred.
Yeah, yeah, so that one is on a, on a different, different scale. So I would like to hear your thoughts, Chief, about that.
So I think we all work together when it comes together, because the mayor normally runs the lead, the contact with VGC. And then we will get staff to help out with parking and things like that. So it is a community event, but the town does make the donation to fund some of that. So it's just, you know, coordinated effort between the church and us, at the town, when I say us, I mean the town.
But the police department go around to the senior buildings.
Right.
Right.
That's separate.
So if we start with Thanksgiving, Chief?
But that's separate.
Right, right. I was gonna ask, Chief, can you, because not everybody, I don't think, understands it. So Chief, could you just explain the program that you guys do for Thanksgiving?
So we get, we get donations from the county for when we go around, so we always ask the apartment complex where our seniors are. Around the front.
It's not open.
Dispatch is open.
Sorry, Chief.
That was actually a delivery for community events.
How timely, we're talking about community events. Look at that.
So we always have, we partner with the county to get donations like our turkeys, then we go up to our partners up at Walmart, and they give us the canned goods and things like that. So we get a head count from the senior buildings, and we normally ration it out twenty-five per building. And that's what the, our partners at like Walmart would donate enough fixings for a hundred bags, and then we just break them up.
Okay.
Give you them up.
Well, I mean, I think, I think they propose fifteen thousand to start out with, I mean, I think that's a, I think that's a good number, and then working with, you know, trying to get some other partners to work with us, I think that's a good number.
Thank you for that. And Chief, thank you for the explanation, because again, I know not everyone knows about the program and how it works and how you guys receive those donations. Councilmember Dixon, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor James. I am in full support for the Thanksgiving giveaway, because this is a wonderful, this is a great way to support our community, especially those who are having food insecurity And also Thanksgiving is a time for gratitude, so we want to make sure that this program stays. The only thing I want to make sure that we actually take care of our residents, because I remember the last night, we had a lot of people from DC and Ivesville, and we try to accommodate them, but we want to make sure that our residents are taken care of first. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that, Councilmember Dixon. And Councilmember McBride, I know you were there as well, I want to get your thoughts. I think you've been doing this a couple of years now.
Yes, that's near and dear to my heart. But yes, I agree that we should, you know, give the donation and as much as possible, you know, because we know that certain times, people have been going through right now, and it hasn't gotten as better as probably society would think it should, but I think we still need to help. And I know that our seniors are very grateful. I know Councilmember Blunt would definitely say that. And I just appreciate all that we do. So that's basically it, yeah. I'm thankful, and if I can help, I'll be there.
Not, not only that, it was my first time, and what I realized is that the residents, they were very grateful, so we should actually continue and up it up.
And I think, not so much in 2023, but in 2022 in particular, when we were wrapping up, I will never forget the number of student volunteers from Bladensburg High School who were asking us, when this is done, can I get a turkey and food for my family? And I think you gave one student a ride home, and, because he couldn't carry everything. And that kid was telling me later on, you have no idea how happy my parents were when I came in with that food. So I know some folks who don't live in the community come, and it's hard to police that, but for the one, the majority who are the students and the families, I mean, they are truly, truly grateful for us being able to provide that resource, especially at a time where they just don't have the means. So I appreciate everyone. So what I'm hearing is fifteen K for Thanksgiving, fifteen K for the Christmas giveaway, and we'll commit to trying to get donations to bridge the gap, so it's not as much on the town to fully fund it.
One question, was it fifty, was it twenty-five thousand for both Thanksgiving and Christmas? Or each?
Each.
Oh, okay, we're speaking, okay.
So we're basically saying, we'll cover thirty, now we've gotta get about twenty K in donations, give or take.
As much as we can. And then also, to the, to the point with the volunteers, because I know that, I know that, I think, we had, at one point, we had like a hundred students, and we had to send, we had to send fifty of them away, but making sure that we set aside, you know, put them in the head count and set aside some bags.
And we did, I don't know if you remember, in the cafeteria, in the corner where you entered the door, all of that was.
Covered all of it?
For the students, yeah. So we made sure, just because of what we learned from 2022 and what the need was. And again, I know last year, even when it was over, there was a couple of girls who were there, they couldn't carry that stuff, so I just had to drop it up to the families later, but you're right, they needed it, and these are folks right here in our neighborhood.
The other fifty.
Yeah.
Who had to be turned away.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And what was the other question you mentioned? Was it two things or just, okay.
Mayor, we, just the only issue that I think we only hit has been regarding timing, not for today, but for at Christmas, is that we did, we had a couple overlaps that particular day, you know, from the standpoint of Shop With A Cop, in regards to the, there was also another community outing. So I, the only issue with Christmas is that we do hit a lot of other peoples, and then with vacations, that it really becomes hard. So there may be, we need to look around those dates and work, and then maybe it's a direct, it might be like a Dear Santa kind of a thing, where we might be able to do a pickup or something different. Because that Saturday, I just felt like, I mean, like you said, Councilwoman, you know, Brown, when you asked, like, did we plan them all on the same day? It's just, that was the only Saturday that worked, and it was everything. So we're gonna try to avoid it, but I'll just say that that is very hard in December to not run into another day where somebody's giving something away.
And part of it was my fault, because of travel.
I know, that's me too, I think I was going away the next week.
I was out of here early, I was like, you're out of here. Trying to cram it all in.
But I just want to say that.
That would not be the case this year, I promise.
But I just want to say that just because it is difficult in December.
Yeah.
And I just wanted to pre-warn the council that we may overlap a little bit because of the way December is. So I just wanted to give that, that warning, just, not that staff isn't trying to work together, but it just happens.
Yeah, all right. I think we have completed our conversation around the mayor and council budget, but appreciate the input and just everyone sharing and just making sure we're being considerate. Yes, did you hear from her?
I didn't, did anybody hear from her yet?
Okay. We, I'll check in on her though. Yeah, but Mr. Tenelli, anything else before we wrap up?
I was gonna say, we got through the mayor and council, we went through the revenues tonight. Let me share a screen real quick, and went through the mayor and council budget, as I could say, you know, that's where the action happens. And then the other three administrative department here, departments here are just the behind-the-scenes administrative support, and those are six employees total, and they're smaller departments. But we'll touch on those next week, I think it's probably a good stopping point, agree? Okay. I mean, just, I mean, just because, I'd love to go on talking for hours of numbers, but I know I can't lose the crowd and everything, so it's, you know.
So next time, we'll have TA budget, town clerk finance, and then the big kahunas over in Public Safety.
And Public Works.
And then.
Our service departments.
Public Works, okay. So we'll wrap up administration, and then we'll shift into Chief Collington and Mr. Hall's side of the universe.
And as we talk through this, you know, if there's additions to expenditures, or we, you know, do something with the ARPA funding, or, you know, it, all these are going to move that transfer from fund balance, you know. So we'll also bring back some, you know, options to increase revenues to offset it as well.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you for walking us through the first portion of the budget for FY 2025. Is there a motion to adjourn tonight's work session?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember McBride. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Dixon. Any final comments or questions? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying goodbye.
Aye.
Any nays? That, the ayes have it, thank you so much, we're adjourned.